Hello, everybody. I see everybody is beginning to come in. If everybody can mute their mics, that would be wonderful and helpful. My name is Dave. I'm going to be the moderator of tonight. We are going to get started in just a few minutes. We're going to let people join in here. Make sure that we get the the most people we can in on the call before we begin. Thanks for coming to be a part of this town hall online forum tonight. So if you're just popping in, if you could mute your microphones, that would be terrific. It will start in just a second. Tonight's forum is going to be interactive where we have some questions that have come in from people in advance. We're going to be, I'm going to be moderating and taking a look at the chat room as we go to be able to answer, be it follow up questions or questions that people have about this. We certainly, we've had a great response up till now, all kinds of different questions about this specific, the specific issue and both Larry Brock and Fernando Mina are going to be speaking about this in just a second. We're letting people roll in and as is the, as is the way on the the Zoom forum. So just give everybody just a second to be able to pop in and then we'll begin with tonight's town hall. See many faces that I know. Hello, Tim. Hello, Dave. All right, let's, let's get rolling here. Let's get rolling on tonight's town hall. Obviously, tonight is going to be, it's going to, as I mentioned earlier, it's going to be a combination of questions that have been submitted by many of you and many people that wanted to be, to be able to have their questions answered. There are more questions that were submitted than time that permits, but so we're trying to be able to bundle together the questions and then please feel free to write comments and questions in the chat on the Zoom and we will answer, propose to Larry to be able to answer as many questions as we possibly can. Tonight, we're going to shoot for about an hour with an out time of eight o'clock. I'm going to turn it over for opening remarks to our Member of Parliament Larry Brock. Larry?
Thank you, Dave, and welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for the interest that you've shown in the first, hopefully, many town halls that I want to have with the good constituents here in Bradford, Brad. Tonight's an important event. We're going to learn some information. We're going to learn that from Fernando. We're going to take some pertinent questions, maybe even take some questions through the chat format. I know the time is tight, so we're going to try to be as concise as possible. Keep my opening remarks as limited as possible. But should anyone have any follow up regarding anything that I say or any other questions, please feel free to reach out to my office starting as early as tomorrow throughout the entire week. We have a pretty tight timeline, which you're going to hear about in a second in terms of making representations, but we want to hear from you. We want you to be informed and we want to give you an opportunity to make representations either for or against the new proposal. So with that in mind, Fernando, please give them the meats and potatoes.
Thanks, Larry. So I'm just going to share my screen here. All right. I think everybody should be able to see that. Okay. What I want to basically go through tonight is threefold. Number one, I want to talk about what the new borders actually are. I want to go through the why and the how this is happening. I know that from what Larry tells me, there have been a lot of questions with regards to the process itself. And I want to make sure everyone is clear on how they can have their say in this process. So first and foremost, if we take a look at the map and this is available online, we will provide a link to this in follow up emails. But this is a map that the Commission has put out. And just very, very quickly, if you're using this map, you simply have to go to the right hand corner here. Type in Bradford. I suppose I should know how to spell that. And it'll bring up the current riding boundary. If you want, you can also click on here under base maps. And you can change the underlying map to any sort of configuration you wish, really. This is my personal favorite because it includes the street names themselves. Once you've done that, you can also change it by clicking on the word proposal to see the new riding boundaries that are being proposed.
Fernando, if I can interrupt, yeah, many of us are unable to see what you are showing. For instance, my screen is locked in at inter- interactive maps. I note that many people are voicing the same concerns. There we go.
Is that better?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, I'll back up then. So here is the current map. And this is available online. You can quickly change the underlying map to the riding boundaries if you wish. Through this here, what I've done is set it to the actual street names. You can certainly zoom in and zoom out to take a closer look. A nice feature that this also has is if you're curious to see what's going to happen to your address. You can type in any address and it'll take you right to it. You can see 224 Memorial Drive, which I typed in is right there. By zooming out, you can see that it's going to actually remain within the riding and I'll show you what I mean by that. Now, if you click on the word proposal, it'll give you the new riding boundaries. And this is really what we're here to discuss. So you can see that Paris, Burford, Scotland and Oakland as well as the Six Nations and the New Credit are going to be, under this proposal, leaving the riding. Paris, Burford, Scotland, Oakland. They are going to join this riding here of Oxford brand, which is centered on Woodstock and to a lesser extent, Ingersoll in the West. Six Nations and New Credit will be joining Alderman Norfolk Six Nations, which is this riding down here. There is an addition that's being made to the writing. This rural area just north of St. George is going to be coming back into the riding. This is north towards Glen Morris. Glen Morris itself, Pinehurst, will not be joining the riding. They'll also be joining the riding of Oxford brand. So I'll switch now to like just switch back. So that's the interactive map that's online. Again, we'll, we'll share that with all the participants so that you can take a a look for yourselves. But I want to touch base as well on, on why and how this is happening. And I want to be absolutely clear on this. The process is being driven by a constitutional requirement and it's guided by legislation. At the time of Confederation, it was agreed upon that in order for the population of each province to be accurately represented in the House of Commons on an ongoing basis, that the number of seats for each province would have to be recalculated every 10 years. And that's basically just to adjust for population growth in different parts of the country. To do this, the first step is for an independent Electoral Boundaries Commission to be created for each province. It consists of three members. It's chaired by a judge that's appointed by, in our case, the Chief Justice of Ontario and two additional members who are appointed by the Speaker of the House of Commons. The two additional members in our case here in Ontario are a professor from political science from McMaster and a professor of political science who's also a director of the Monks School of Foreign Affairs. The Commission uses a formula embedded in the legislation to determine how many seats are allocated to each province. And then it's, and then after that sets out to creating the boundaries of each new riding. So the provincial population from the previous census, this time around, it's 2021 is taken. It's divided by what's called the electoral quotient. That's the number of 121,891 for this tier. And that gives the initial seat allocation for the province as a whole. The Senatorial Clause and the Grandfather Clause are applied. These clauses have to do with the rules that state that no province is going to be represented by fewer members of the House of Commons than there are in the Senate. And as well, it respects some of the initial baseline numbers of representation that were created at the time of Confederation. The representation rule is applied. This effectively means that no one is going to be underrepresented. And those total number of provincial seats are then added to one seat per territory. And you get the total number of seats for the new House of Commons after the next election. At that stage of the game, the Commission sets, sets to work on actually laying down the boundaries of those writings. And they try to get as close as they can to that number of 121,891 for each riding. Now, it's not easy to do. And in many cases, they're either over or in some cases below that number. And of course, as I'm sure everybody on the call here recognizes a straightforward mathematical equation is not really the best way to determine how best people can be represented in the House of Commons. And that's why the Commission opens the door for the public and for MPs to speak to the proposed boundaries and to have their say. As a member of the public, you have an opportunity to participate in those public hearings. And just very quickly, I'll link to and this time I'll make sure I share that page. I'll link to the public participation page that's been set up here by the Commission. You'll see that this is all information with regards to how to register to actually participate in the, in the public hearings. Again, we're going to include this link to all, in an email to all of you who are participating tonight. So you won't have to worry about, about quickly writing that down. But a couple of things to keep in mind, if you're going to participate in the public hearing. Right now, our public hearing is scheduled to take place on the 27th of September at 6:30 PM and it's scheduled to be a virtual hearing. The deadline to register, if you want to participate in that public hearing is September 25th. You can register either as an observer or a participant. And if you're unable to make it to the meeting, either as an observer or a participant, you can still submit your comments or suggestions to the Commission via email. And here's the email that they're asking you to send it to. There is something called an interactive mapping tool, which you'll also find on the website, which is another way that you can direct your comments through to the Commission using. Quite frankly, I've taken a look at it. I think it's a little cumbersome. The most straightforward way is to email the Commission itself if you're going to put forward a written submission. So with that, I'll pass it back to Dave. And I think we'll get on with the rest of the day.
Thanks, Fernando. We will repeat that information that he just said a number of times throughout this public forum, just to be able to make sure that everybody has it. And I'm sure that if anybody needs that information, it will be given to them if you, if you send your email to Larry. Larry, I'll just start off with this. There, there was a question. I'll just read one specifically, but obviously a number of people asked this question. Lucas Oakley said, I feel culturally keeping my community, Paris, together with Branford is more appropriate than relegating it to be a part of Oxford County. So I'll just start with this. How do you feel about this? How do you feel about this redistribution proposal and do you support it?
Simply no, I do not support it. I will be making my written submissions and oral submissions in terms of preserving what we have. In my view, the county of Brand and the city of Branford are so closely intertwined, both economically, politically, socially. We have shared services that I can speak to in a moment, depending on the nature of the question. We have a historical context. And take a look, take for instance, the, the town of Paris. We have more in common with the city of Branford for those residents living in Paris than they certainly do in downtown Woodstock. Or in, in, in some cases, looking at Six Nations of the Grand River, Mississauga is of the credit. Taking a look at Simcoe. So no, I will not be supporting this proposition. And I'll be making representations to keep what we have. We have worked well with one MP and one MPP representing Branford, Brad. We work well beyond partisan lines, regardless of political stripe. We work for the best interests of our constituents and that's something that we will continue to do.
We have a question in the chat room and this might be a Larry and/or Fernando. Corey is asking, can, can we see or know the size of the writings before and after the proposed change?
By size, Corey, do you mean population?
I'm going to assume population. We've seen that, we've seen the geographical size, but how does that vary in population with our writing?
The current population size of our writing is 140,000. That's according to the 2021 census. And if I could just quickly check here for you, just to make sure I get my figures right. The current, the writing as proposed would have us at 124,000. So a difference of 16,000.
Guys, maybe you can speak to the fact of the size of our writing. I've, I've heard anecdotally at least, and, and maybe you said it Fernando, but we have a pretty large writing comparatively to other, other writings in this country, do we not?
We do. We definitely do. From a population perspective, we are on the larger side. There is no question about it.
Tim Philp is asking, how can we keep what we have when writings are limited to population since the population has increased?
Good question, Tim, but as Fernando has outlined, and I'm going to repeat numerous times, this is not simply a mathematical calculation. And that's the whole purpose behind public hearings and then ultimately there's going to be MP second stage hearings where further representations can be made. So we can argue for those non-mathematical factors and that's what I want to hear from constituents tonight. I want to hear about our cultural connections. I want to hear about our economic connections. We certainly, as I've indicated, we work well vertically. The population has been well served by one MP and one MPP for several decades now. I know that traditionally our writing has been a mixed bag in terms of either one MP or two MPs. We have seen significant changes over the last 100 years in our writing. But for the last several decades, it has been one MP and one MPP who work for the best interests of the community at large. We can represent your interests very well, respectively in Ottawa and Toronto.
Please keep asking questions in the chat room. I've sort of bannered some of the, the pre-asked questions under a few different umbrellas. And this is, this is safe to say has been one of the umbrellas that, that people have asked questions about. So I'll, I'll just ask, using, using the language of people that have, have written in, who is proposing this change and why? Is it a Liberal Party conspiracy? Is it an Ontario PC Party conspiracy? Isn't this just about electoral gain? So there's suspicion about who is, who is proposing this? Larry, maybe you can speak to in, from your perspective, who's proposing this and is this a conspiracy?
I'll be, I'll be very, very clear and blunt. There is no hidden agenda here. There is no conspiracy here. There are disruptions, not necessarily just Branford, Brad, but there are disruptions, significant disruption in other parts of Ontario where a whole riding that is currently represented by one liberal member, particularly up north, has been completely disbanded. And the entire area has been basically shaved off into two or three different writings. So conservative MPs have been impacted. NDP MPs have been impacted, particularly in London. And liberal MPs have been impacted in Ontario. And the same thing is true, particularly in Western Canada and in Atlantic Canada. So there is no conspiracy. As Fernando has quite ably indicated, this is driven by legislation and the requirements of our constitution.
Tim has asked, asked a follow up. Would this proposal not make the writing more homogeneous? Having a rural urban writing creates conflicts between the needs of rural and urban residents. Having mostly urban writing, would it make it easier to represent these voters?
I've, I've grown, I've been born and raised in this community. I have relatives, friends who live in the county, who live in the city. I have grown up with this mix of rural and urban. Politically, I've been motivated to represent the best interests of everyone in the county as well as the city. I regularly hear from constituents with rural issues and urban issues. And this is not unique to Branford, Brad folks. This is pretty much true with the exception of the GTA. Pretty much all of Ontario has a mixture of rural and urban as well as across Canada. So I don't see any advantage to basically carve out the city and have one MP representing the city and having the rest of this close connecting county that we've really enjoyed our social and economic unity with for decades to be carved out and to be represented by MPs certainly do not know and have no history with the county.
If I could, if I could just add to that, Dave, I would point out that St. George would remain, even though it's part of the county, remain within the writing as would Brant County as it moves east towards Ancaster and some in the southeast as well. So they're, they're effectively splitting the county and giving some of it to the new writing of Oxford brand. And then keeping some of it within the, the existing writing. So it's not a, it's not really a straight writing of Branford. Despite the fact that they're naming it the writing of Branford, there is still a Brant County component to it.
Let's, I'll, I'll go to my last of the, of the three sort of banner questions of the questions that have been submitted. And again, we can go down to some of these specific phrasing of them, if, if there, if there's time and time permits, but first obviously was, do you support it? Second was, is this a conspiracy? Slash, who proposed this? And, and the third overwhelmingly was, was a question about local services. And really, that's what a lot of people wanted to be able to know, like, how does this? If this happened and you know, obviously it's not set in stone yet, but if it happened, how would it affect our local services?
That's a really good question. And I know that a number of constituents had similar concerns. So for, for several years, the county, the city, Six Nations, New Credit, we've worked very closely and collaboratively on services that we deliver to those residents. I've indicated numerous times are fully integrated economically and socially with each other. Again, we have more in common with each other than we do with Woodstock or Simcoe. Particularly on the collaboration issue for delivery of social services, particularly as it relates to homeless. I know our drug strategy incorporated by the city of Branford in the county have been collaboratively worked upon and are being delivered with a, with a single vision in mind. We deal with planning issues, building issues, promotion of local artists and culture, whole host of other areas. And again, as I've indicated, there always has been regardless of political affiliation, a understanding between an MP and an MPP to work collaboratively for the best interests of the community at large. So as it relates to tax issues or bill issues, things of that nature, you're still going to belong to the county of Brand. It's just a situation for those, again, as Fernando was indicating, we had, we don't lose all of the county of Brand. We lose a significant portion of it population wise. But you're still going to be, as far as local government is concerned, you're still going to be affiliated with the county of Brad. You're not going to lose that title. You're not going to become County of Oxford. It just means for electoral purposes, for election purposes. You may be represented by an Oxford MP or in the case of those in the Six Nations or the Mississaugas of the credit by your MP and Alderman Norfolk.
I'll just mention in the chat room, Fernando clarified to Corey, the new population for the writing would be 118,000, not 124,000. He said, sorry about that. And I felt that was heartfelt. The current writing is 140,000, according to the 2021 census. Larry, yes, my, my pleasure. So Larry, I'll ask this question. This is something that was asked by Jaclyn Cooper. And I think it's a very fair question for, from a constituent to be able to ask, what are you hearing from other residents? It's, it's, I think, I think for many people who, some of these different things are, you know, we don't know all the different nuances of it. And so knowing how other people are feeling about this, I think is, is important. How are people feeling about this?
Well, very good question. We have, we have taken quite a bit of calls to the constituency office as well as reviewing and responding to several questions on social media. And when I first started to spread the news about these proposed changes, you know, some responses were, why is this happening? Again, some individuals were thinking about various conspiracies, much like what we're hearing from some constituents today. Some thought this was just a political grab of some type. Some thought this was just a political grab of some type. Some thought this was a waste of, of tax dollars. Why are you tinkering with something that has always worked very well in the past? So, you know, the, the general theme was, the impression I was getting is there was a lot of misinformation that was out there. And the government, in my view, the commission, in my view, could have done a much better job of communicating this process. I know that they worked with various publishers across the country, various media publishers and, and put in various informational circulars in the paper. I know that the Bradford Expositor shared something several weeks ago, but it was rather dense and it was, it was very difficult to go through. So part of my overall strategy was to educate the public. So I responded to as many people as I could on my social media, responding to phone calls, responding to direct emails, et cetera. And I thought, what better way to really open up a greater, wider audience and to address these issues head on as we get closer and closer to the timelines is to have the, the town hall that we're doing right now. So basically, again, Dave, in a nutshell, what we have received so far by way of a variety of the questions has been traditionally what I've received so far prior to the town hall. And quite frankly, talking to other Ontario MP colleagues who are facing similar disruptions in their writings, again, very similar types of questions that they're fielding as well.
Okay, I have a couple other questions in the hopper from people that have submitted in advance from Jeanette Andrews. Is this only happening in this riding or is it happening in other ridings as well?
As I indicated, it's happening across Canada. Excuse me, but particularly in Ontario. I can count, just, I'm looking at a map here very, very quickly, folks. I'm looking at minor changes to probably 30 to 40 ridings in Ontario alone. And what I mean by minor changes, I'm looking at changes to the name by way of minor changes, because that's part of the redistribution plan as well. But then there are major changes. And what I mean by major changes, like we have a major change potentially here in Branford Brant. There are major changes in Northern Ontario. There are major changes to parts in the southwestern Ontario, the London, the Sarnia area, the Chatham area, where big swaths of population have been redistributed. So not necessarily Branford Brant is impacting all of Ontario, including Toronto.
So I have one more question in the hopper that have been submitted in advance. So if you have questions that you want to be able to put in the chat room to, to have Larry and or Fernando interact with, please go ahead and do that. I do want to mention Penny McVicker, who is, I see in the, see her name in the, in the, in the Zoom, asked, how is this going to affect other elections? How is it going to affect school boards, family, children's services, Ontario Works, et cetera?
Again, it does not impact local politics to the extent, and there's a caveat to that. And this is another area that I want the folks on this call to keep in mind. We have been given very little notice to educate and to receive responses from constituents pro or against these proposed changes. So ultimately, my representation to the commission will include a request to postpone the hearing as currently scheduled for next Tuesday. I have the support of a number of MPs in southwest Ontario who also feel the very same thing. Lack of proper timing, lack of notice. They really dislike, and I know I personally dislike the whole concept of a virtual hearing. What you didn't hear from Fernando, and when you do go on the website, you'll note that this particular hearing for next Tuesday is not exclusively for Branford Brant. We are among possibly eight to 10 other ridings in southwestern Ontario who are all grouped together. And you can just imagine what kind of logistical nightmare that is going to be for the organizers to try to give appropriate time to all constituents, all stakeholders who want to make verbal representations. Some people are going to be disappointed. And I don't think that is a fair way to exercise our democratic rights to express an opinion that impacts us rather substantially. So there is a precedent. There are some ridings in Western Canada who have been successful in asking for a postponement of the hearing by several months. So we are going to be doing that collectively as a group of MPs. It's also important to note, and it's really unfair in my view, that the commission did not take this into consideration when they set the timelines for the hearings. We have the municipal election coming up in October. Are we to assume that the current existing makeup of our city council, our, our county council is going to remain the same? There may be changes to the mayor position. There may be changes to councillors. There may be changes to school board trustees, who again, may be denied the opportunity to make representations. So another good point that I think works in our favor, that they are pushing this too fast. And quite frankly, we don't want a virtual hearing. We want an in person hearing. And I certainly want to make representations to give us adequate and sufficient time that anyone who expresses an interest to make verbal and oral, sorry, written and verbal representations be afforded that opportunity.
I want to make sure that I, I read this out because I know that if I didn't, she would kick my butt the next time that I saw her. Lucy Marco said, I fully support Larry's position and want to make sure that he knows that I support him and how to support him. So Lucy, you're the best. You're one of my favorite people.
Thank you.
So I'm going to give one sort of final call for, for questions. Tim Philps says, regardless of the outcome, Larry is making some good points. Thank you, Tim. For now, excuse me, Fernando, I'm going to go over to you just to be able to remind people about what the direction is. And, and really, we want people for or against the, this idea to be able to make comments. This, this is part of this process. And, and then we'll, we'll go back to Larry for final comments or questions if, if, if there are any afterwards.
I think there's actually one that just came in from John Odie in the chat, Dave.
Great.
I think, which I think is a good one, by the way.
Yeah. What, what can any of our local associations do to help this?
Very, very simple, John. Contact me and I can give you all the details as to how you can make either written submissions or written and oral submissions to give you standing to make your voice known as a member of the local real estate board as to how you feel this particular change impacts your industry. So I'd be very, very happy to work with you on that, John, starting as, as early as tomorrow morning.
And if any of you are, are members of other associations, Chamber of Commerce or any other local groups, of course, the commission will welcome your input to this process. Again, as I said in the beginning, there is a mathematical equation, which is laid out in the legislation, which the commission has to use to calculate the populations of the ridings. They then lay out the boundaries. But the reason they go to the public and seek their input is because they recognize that a simple mathematical equation and a simple law, line drawn to meet those requirements doesn't always make for the, 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 the best mix, if you will, of a riding. It doesn't address all the issues that have to be addressed in representation. This is your opportunity to have your say when it comes to the, the riding boundaries. I will share those coordinates again with everyone here. So again, the public hearings are set for September 27th at 6:30 PM. The deadline to register is the 25th of December. You register as either an observer or a participant. And if you're not going to be attending the actual public meeting, you can submit your comments and suggestions to the commission by email at the email that I have up here on the, on the screen. And, and once again, we'll provide the, this information to everyone who's participated, everyone who's registered for tonight. And I can't stress this enough. This is your opportunity, whether you're for or against these riding changes, these boundary changes, whether you'd like to see a modification to these boundary changes, even if it's just the name that's being applied to the riding. This is your opportunity to be heard. The commission does listen. And I would, I would strongly encourage you to take part in the process.
I'll throw out one more question from Andy, who, Andy, sorry, strain, Straysfeld, who asked the question, will Branford Brant Conservative members have to join other riding associations to be part of this election?
I guess, I guess it depends, Andy, where you live. If you are a conservative current member or a conservative just by affiliation and interest, and you do want to get involved in an association, it really will depend on where you live after the decision is made by the commission. For instance, if we lose Paris, if we lose Scotland, if we, if we lose Burford, if we lose Oakland, there is no prohibition, I suppose, of you remaining with a local Branford association, because there are provisions in the bylaws that allow for out of jurisdiction membership. But if you wanted to influence policy and you wanted to contribute by way of any decisions or the volunteer, for instance, someone who lives in, in Oakland, who lives a substantial distance away, probably from the members' office in downtown Woodstock, that's going to be your scenario moving forward. Likewise, if you are a member of the Six Nations or Mississaugas of the Credit, your political association most likely will be in downtown Simcoe. So again, there is no prohibition to remain with the Branford Association. But if you wanted to influence anything beyond that, you may, you may have to, you may have to travel a distance.
City councillor Rose Sikoli says, thank you for hosting the session. The proposed changes seem counterintuitive to me. We have many shared services and cultural associations with Brant, Brant County to, to divide our region. I fully support your position. There is a question about when will the decision be made public following the hearings?
As I, as I, Fernando, you want to address that?
Go ahead, Larry. I've got some details here. I saw the question come in.
I may not have the exact details. So Fernando, it was probably best to answer that. But as I indicated earlier on, this is stage number one. This is local stakeholder constituent MP input. Once that first stage is completed, then there is a second stage for MP only input. And I think that continues well into 2023 before ultimately a decision is made. Fernando, probably you'll have some tighter timelines that you can share with everybody.
Yeah. So the next stage of the game is for the commission to write what's considered its, its final report, taking into consideration public consultation, for example. That report will go to the Speaker of the House of Commons before December of 2022. After that, the, the reports themselves, and of course, these are reports from across the country. The reports themselves will be considered by a committee of members of parliament. And they will then follow up with the commission with any objections that have been raised by members of parliament through that process. The final representation order, which is, 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 I suppose fancy speak for the final maps, is expected in September of 2023. And they'll be in place for the next election, presuming it occurs in 2025.
The last question that has been asked a couple of times, and I admit that I just Googled the lyrics to the ABBA song Fernando, but none of it is appropriate. I've had a few people ask, Fernando, could you introduce yourself? So Fernando's been providing some, some, some great information for us tonight. Fernando, maybe just introduce yourself.
Sure. So my name is Fernando Mina. Some of you I know recognize me on this call. I recognize you. Born and raised in, in Branford. Lived in Branford with my family until I was taken to Ottawa by the former Member of Parliament, Phil McCollman, to work as his legislative assistant. Since then, we've stayed here in Ottawa and I now, I suppose, work on the dark side as a consultant lobbyist. Sorry about that, folks.
But a great hang and a wonderful guy. Larry, maybe let's take a couple of minutes and sort of give your closing remarks to tonight.
Again, I want to thank everyone who took the time out to join us in my inaugural town hall. This is a very, very important issue to me and it's obviously it's an important issue to you. I thank you for all the questions that you put to the moderator in advance and the questions that came through on chat. I reiterate again, please, if you have any further comments, concerns, suggestions, follow up with me personally. My office is really willing and able to address any of your concerns. I'm available all of this week. It's important that you have your voice. This is your democratic right to express your concerns as to how this is impacting your life and your, your, your family's life in terms of our close proximity to, to Branford and to the county. So please take the time. If you really want to get involved, we've given you some great concrete steps to do that. If any further follow up is required, we're only a phone call away. So thank you so much, folks.
Larry, thanks so much for tonight for making yourself available. Fernando, thanks for your work on this matter. And for everybody who jumped in and participated in this town hall, thank you so much. This is, this is how politics is done properly. Information brought, we get all the different details and then we all interact as we, as we should, as citizens who want to see the best for our riding. So thank you so much for tonight and we will talk to everybody very, very soon. Thanks. Bye bye.